This is the special called meeting for the Coffee County Board of Education for February 12th, 2025. We usually like to start with a prayer, if Mr. Cordell could do that, and then pledge, and then we'll adopt the agenda and move from there, so.
Let's pray. Father in your son's holy name, we thank you, Lord, for this day, this beautiful day, another day to enjoy the beauty of your creation. Father, we thank you for the rain you sent to water the earth. We thank you, Father, for this team, this occasion, the staff, our teachers, our entire system. I pray, Lord, that you would give us all wisdom and discernment as to how to make best the best decisions, and may everything we say and do be to honor and glorify you. We thank you for the legislative conference that we just attended. We thank you for Dr. Grissom and what she does for our TSBA, for our entire state. I just pray, Lord, that you'd bless her, give her wisdom, thank her for being here today. And Father, thank you for this team that you have brought together so we could honor and glorify you. This we pray in your son's precious name. Amen.
Okay, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. We hopefully have a short meeting tonight, which would definitely be a new thing for us, so.
Get Tammy home.
Yeah. I think she's on her way to Ray County, actually, so. So the first thing we need to do is, we got one item on the agenda tonight, which is to approve the director search brochure and the wording thereof, so we need a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll say move.
Mr. Hansert, Mr. Cordell, all in favor? Mr. Cordell, start. Uh, Mr. Hansert.
Aye.
Ms. Jones. Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
And the chair will vote aye. That is six to zero. All right, the agenda is approved, so let's move on to our only agenda item. So, Dr. Grissom.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I placed at each of your seats a binder. We call this the search interim report. As you all know, on January the 27th, I conducted faculty and community meetings together, input for the board. We had 134 people in attendance for the in-person meetings. There were 37 in attendance for the noon meeting, which was the county commission, mayor, city council, community, and business leaders in the board. The classified employees, we had 23. Central office supervisors and principals, 37. Teachers, 23. And the community forum, 14. I'm on page one of the binder in the center. We had 233 responses to the online survey. So, inside of the binder, you're going to get the comments from each of the in-person meetings, and then we listed the comments verbatim from the online survey in the notebook. As you all know, we asked three questions in the in-person meetings, and they were the same questions that were asked on the online survey. The first question was, what are the good things going on in Coffee County that you would like to see continued? We have read all the comments, and the top three responses to that question are on page two. The first question was, the three most common were teacher support and pay. Multiple responses highlight the importance of competitive teacher pay and support for teachers. This includes salary increases, treating teachers as professionals, and reducing micromanagement to allow teachers to focus on student learning and growth. The second good thing that was going on that was mentioned, excellence program and after school programs. The excellent program is frequently mentioned, especially for its support of working with parents and students. Additionally, after-school programs and tutoring services are seen as a key to enhancing student success and providing valuable extra learning opportunities. And then the third one was STEM and career technical education programs. STEM and the career technical programs, which are emphasized across elementary, middle, and high schools, are often referred referenced for their importance in preparing students for future careers and their alignment with the community's education priorities. As you, when you go through the notebook, there were other things that were mentioned. We just took the top three for that one question. The second question, what are the challenges a new director of schools will face? The three most common responses, and we're on page two at the bottom. Number one, lack of trust and communication between the school board and the staff. Many responses highlight a significant breakdown in communication and trust between the school board, teachers, and other staff members. A lot of people feel that the school board is not listening to educators concerned, and there's a general sense that the board may not prioritize the needs of the staff. Number two, staff morale and teacher retention. A common concern is the low morale among educators and staff, largely due to the actions and attitudes of the school board. Number three, school safety and facility concerns. Safety, both fiscal and emotional, is another recurring concern. Several responses point to inadequate facilities, outdated buildings, and a lack of safety protocols, which is especially a concern in the context of student mental health. For the third question we asked were, what are the personal characteristics that you would like to see in a new director of schools? The three most common was, number one, they would like someone with a good listener, a leader who can actively listen to stakeholders, including teachers, staff, parents, and the community, ensuring their concerns and ideas are valued. Number two, strong communicator, someone who can clearly convey ideas, expectations, and policies to all stakeholders, fostering transparency and trust. And number three, problem solver, an individual who can analyze challenges, develop solutions, and implement effective strategies to improve the school system. Starting on page, we're going to jump to page six. Page six begins the overview of the in-person meetings and the online survey. So you have all the comments that were made at each of the in-person meetings for each of the three questions, and then you also have all the comments that were provided via the online survey. And I do want to point out, we provided the online comments verbatim, so we did not correct grammar or sentence structure to those. We just copied them as they were given to us on the online survey. Each, at each of the in-person meetings and the online survey, if you will turn to page 34 in your book, we ask each participant that completed the survey or was in attendance for the meetings, there were 21 characteristics that you'd like to see in a superintendent's. We tallied those and asked them to rank them. The items that are highlighted are the top 10. So the top 10 out of those list of characteristics were listed on page 34. Ability to initiate and adapt to change. Two, ability to listen. Ability to generate support from community and groups. Ability to work with and generate support from the entire board. Competent manager of budget and fiscal affairs. Effective communicator, both oral and written. Exhibit strong analytical and problem skills. Exhibit strong interpersonal communication skills. Goal-oriented, committed to long-range planning, and strong academic and instructional leader. So from the comments from the in-person meetings and from the results of this list of rankings, we have developed from that, and I commend the board for asking for input. This involves, this process gave everyone in the community, faculty, and staff to tell us what they felt, what they'd like in a new director of schools, so I commend the board for giving everyone the opportunity to participate. In the side front pocket of your binder, we have developed a vacancy announcement brochure. And this is the item that your chairman said that you'll need to vote on tonight so we can post the vacancy. The minimum qualifications came directly from your board policy. They're at the beginning of the vacancy brochure. The selection criteria are those top 10 I just mentioned that are listed there on the first page. And then we did a page that talked a little bit about your community, some system facts, because when someone's looking to apply, they want to know a little bit about your community, about the system. And then the third page is the application process. Once we post this, applicants will apply for the position via online portal that TSBA provides. So that is the brochure, and I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, and entertain any questions.
Thank you for compiling us, and I did want to mention for everybody that this binder, Melissa will have a copy of this, it is available to the public to come in and look at. Too many pages to scan and put online, but it will be available here in the central office if anybody wants to take the time to go through there. And I know that Matthew is just chomping at the bit to do that. But do we have any questions for Dr. Grissom? Any questions on either the survey or the qualifications flyer? Nope?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this. I do want to add one, make one request or one change in the minimum qualifications, that we take out the professional educator's license phrase there. Doing some research on that and thinking it through, I don't want by including that, that to take out someone that may not have a license, but may be thinking outside the box, is a good communicator and experienced, and got really strong in management and administrative skills. And I don't know what would be involved in a professional educator's license, but I'm going to suggest we take that out. And also, check in code, TCA 49-2-301C, a director cannot act as a principal or teacher. So my concern is, why would we have that in there? And I understand that to a point, but that, I don't want that to potentially eliminate someone outside that may have tremendous management and administrative skills and may not have a license, or may be taught. And I got to thinking this through last night, and I thought, well, if a hospital has administrator position open, I don't know that you'd require the administrator to be, have a doctor's degree, just to serve as an administrator in a hospital. So I had a concern with that. So I just wanted to, on that motion, suggest we take that one provision out.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Sure.
In regards to your minimum qualifications, I took that directly from the school board policy, so if you want to change that, that's going to require a policy change.
Right. Well, or we can suspend policy for.
Well, you're going to have, either way, you're going to have to vote on the policy.
Right. We would have to suspend policy, yes.
Yeah.
I agree. So, I guess then, the motion would be to adopt this, the brochure.
Yes.
With the change that we removed, professional educator's license by suspending policy in that regard for the director search. And I guess that would, that would have to be the motion then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Do we have a second on that? Mr. Cordell has made the motion. The motion is to adopt the brochure and suspend policy, which requires a professional educator's license. No second? All right, then, we have no motion then? We're going to have to take some action on this, so do we have another motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept it as it's written.
Second it.
All right, any discussion? The motion is to accept the brochure as written. Any discussion?
I just want to make sure, is Beth supposed to be, is she, Beth Yance, is she supposed to be part of this?
No.
Oh, okay.
She's on.
Oh, she's not Zooming?
She doesn't qualify for Zooming in, although she did contact me and say, and she actually recommended removing that provision on the professional educator's license.
I just didn't want to link her out, because I know, I thought maybe she was.
Yeah, she just asked me to mention that, so. So any further discussion on this? All right, the motion is to adopt the brochure as written. Take a vote. Mr. Hansert.
Aye.
Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell.
Nay.
And I will vote nay. That is four to two. So, we have, we do not have a quorum. It's the same situation we ended up with last meeting. We do not have a quorum. Five people would be a positive vote. Right now, it fails. We can have a motion to reconsider either of these amendments, I guess.
Is it still up for discussion?
Yeah, at this point.
Yeah. I think the biggest thing that I, nothing against Mr. Cordell, respect him, but I think it's equivalent to any job that you go to. If we have somebody that doesn't have a teacher's license, it's hard for the teachers to respect, maybe to see the teachers to think that there is a common bond with the teachers that's already teaching, you know, for them to have, you know, as a supervisor. I know with me, it would be hard for me to have someone as a boss that's never done what I've done before, that don't even have a degree in it, or a teacher's license, I should say. And that's what I've gotten from the teachers that, and that's who I'm supposed to be supporting, and from other constituents that has talked to me about this. So that's kind of my, where I'm coming from, you know, just to let people know where I'm coming from, so.
Mr. Ballard, you really should be having a motion before discussion.
Right.
At this point, I do believe.
Well, we would have to, I mean, we've got both options that have already.
I know, I'm just, it's just rubber's ruled order, I just touch and base it.
Yeah, all right, so we'd have to have a motion to reconsider, I guess. So, so, do you want to reconsider your initial motion?
Yes.
So Mr. Cordell has a motion to reconsider. Do we, so we'd have to vote to reconsider.
And I find my add, Mr. Chairman. I love our teachers, I so respect and appreciate what they're doing. They've gone through tremendous stress and time to get to where they are. I respect and appreciate that, but I just didn't want us by having that in there to maybe exclude someone that has tremendous management skills and could really think a little outside the box and move forward. If I may, I talked with one candidate, just briefly, but he has served as the secretary, he was over the state Department of Education in one state for years, and I don't know why he doesn't have a teaching certificate, but he has tremendous experience working at the junior college level and whatever, and he may be capable of bringing a measure to the team that maybe we haven't thought of before, or some of his work ethic. He's very experienced, very knowledgeable, very brilliant. Don't know why he doesn't have the whatever, but I just hate for us to exclude a really good candidate, just because the person doesn't, should have, but they don't have a teacher's certificate. And I know that's in our policy.
Mr. Ballard, you have a motion, and you don't have a second for discussion.
Do we have, oh, do we have a second on the motion reconsider?
Okay, I'll be quiet then.
No motion, no second. To reconsider the initial motion of Mr. Cordell to adopt this without the professional educator's license, suspend policy for that.
So what is, what is the motion for? To suspend policy or to adopt? I'm sorry, I'm confused.
I'm kind of lost, too.
Yeah. Okay, let me repeat the motion. We're reconsidering Mr. Cordell's initial motion to adopt this without the professional, without the requirement for a professional educator's license, which would require suspending our policy, and I don't remember, I think it's 5.804?
I'd have to look it up.
Yeah.
Sorry.
To suspend policy for the director's search. That is the motion. So, to adopt the brochure without the professional educator's license requirement. There is, what's that?
Well, who seconded it before?
Nobody.
Nobody seconded it before, so.
So this motion includes suspending the policy that's currently in place, correct?
Right. No second? All right. And I guess our next option is to reconsider to adopt this policy, or a motion to reconsider the vote to adopt the policy as written. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to accept the directors as listed in the brochure.
I'll second it.
Ms. Jones seconds it. Any discussion?
Well, I would like to say something. I know that when we're looking at these survey questions and the answers that we got from various people, and two of the things was the communication and trust between the school board, teachers, staff members, and the board, and that there was a common concern of low morale among educators and staff, largely due to the actions and attitudes of the school board. And I feel like that as a former teacher and an employer, teacher of the school system, I think we would be neglecting their concerns of having a leader that has been in the classroom and knows what's going on in the everyday life of a teacher. And to me, that's very important, and I know there's probably some really good candidates out there, but you cannot provide the best of leadership if you haven't been in that spot at some time during your career. And that's, that's the way I feel.
I think the point was not so much that they didn't have experience as a teacher or in that environment, but whether they have a current professional educator's license, which I believe Dr. Powell does not. Does he have a?
I need to check those credentials before he is brought on.
I mean, he would have to have a teacher's license if he couldn't have.
Teacher's license, okay. Then I stand corrected.
May I add that the law only requires the superintendent to have a bachelor's degree in any subject, and there's no superintendent license or certification. That's law. However, you all, by board policy, have required more, and that's what's listed in the brochure.
Yes, ma'am.
And if I may, again, it, you know, if we just abolish the policy, that gives a bad, to me, that's just going to give us a bad image, instead of going through three readings like we always do when policies are changed. And if we just immediately abolish a policy and change the qualifications, then I think we're going to really have a lot of additional, you know, non-support from our employees.
Can I say something? I agree with Ms. Jones. I feel like in order for a director to really be able to identify with the challenges that teachers are faced with every day in that classroom setting, that they, in my opinion, would need to have taught in the classroom for not just a short amount of time, but, you know, a decent amount of time. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I have to agree with Ms. Jones and Ms. Matthews on, I think, in order to create that bond between teachers and the director and the school board, I think it would be in our best interest to keep the professional educator's license in the brochure, because like Ms. Matthews said, you know, a teacher's not going to feel like they can come to the director if they have an issue in the classroom if the director's never been in the classroom.
Further discussion? All right, let's take it to a vote. This is to adopt, the motion is to adopt the brochure as written. So, Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Ms. Matthews.
Aye.
Mr. Coon.
Aye.
Mr. Cordell. Mr. Hansert.
Aye.
And I will vote aye on that. That passes six to zero. That is the item of business, and I believe we are concluded. We just had to do that because we're used to two-hour meetings, so we had to drag it out.
That's right. We will post this in the morning, and as indicated on the timeline, the application deadline will be March 14th, after which time we will review all applications, screen those according to the criteria that the board adopted, and we'll bring you up to three finalists that we think best meets the criteria. The board will, at that point, once I present finalists, I do not participate in the interviews, so the board will set up your interviews with those candidates and make your selection from there. All applications will be turned over to you as well that night, if there's someone that you would like to interview that's up to the board. We will, every Friday, send you a list of the people that have applied, so you'll be up to date on the applicants until I present the finalist on March 31st.
I have a question. So you're telling us that you're only going to present three people?
Up to three.
For us to interview?
Uh-huh, yes.
But we'll see all the, you're going to send us all the resumes, so.
Yeah, we'll give you all the resumes.
We can shuffle the order if we want.
I thought that was kind of a small number, because I remember prior to, you know, I was involved in one whenever we named a director, and it was more than three people we interviewed.
Lately, it, some boards ask for five, but as I said before, the candidate pool is slim, just like you have a hard time finding teachers. We don't get as many applicants as we used to. Right now, we have five searches going on at the same time, and there's 11 superintendent vacancies across the state, and it's not just our state. Everyone, I just got off the phone with the Virginia folks, they've got more than 11 searches searches going on. So there, there are not a lot of applicants, and we recruit as much as we can to get folks to come and, but you know, you, you've got to do, as a board, your part in attracting people to want to apply. It's, it works both ways. You know, you've got a, you want good candidates, but you all have to have things in place where people want to come to Coffee County, because there's lots of vacancies going on across the state right now. But as I said, our job is not to select your director of schools, you just ask us to do the legwork, so we're going to do that for you. We will screen all the applicants. We've got folks, just because they list someone on their reference page, we, we know folks that we can call that to find out about people that are not listed as a reference. I think that's one of the benefits of using our association. We know, we have some applicants that'll apply for every search that we've done, and I've been there thirty-six years, and I've seen some for the last twenty apply for everything. So we, we know what's out there. We will bring you the ones that we think best meet what your criteria is in the brochure, but at the end of the day, it is the board's decision. I'll give you all the applications, and you can do with what you want at that point.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
I guess I'm just being dumb, but what are we, what are we stating that the salary is? Because that's a big, that's a big thing. What?
Yes, this is something the board needs to decide, at least give me a salary range.
Right.
Because most people, when they are applying, like all of us, work for a reason, right? I need to know a salary range so I can tell interested applicants what the range would be.
We've been having a lot of committee meetings, but we're going to have to have another director search committee meeting, and that, that is going to be a topic. We got to work on the contract, the draft contract too, so these are some things we got to get done. And I know that we've been having a lot of meetings, and I know poor Holly has been like seven or eight meetings in the last week and a half, so.
I can't imagine anyone turning in an application. I guess they could turn it in, but that's the first, one of the first things they're going to look at is what the salary is.
Yeah, but you typically don't list that.
It'll list what the current salary, you know, the state provides the salary.
They'll say what the current is.
Yeah. That's the only thing I can share with them is what...
The current salary is what?
Was, well, that's a good question, because we never have been able to nail that down, exactly. I think it was around a hundred and forty or so, but, but we've been discussing, you know, salary plus bonus and stuff too, and we need to hash that out, so.
Okay.
But you typically, in the brochure that goes out, you typically do not put a salary range in there, do you?
No.
Okay, so they can inquire.
Not unless the board specifically wants it in the brochure, we do not put that in the brochure.
Okay, so we got a little bit of time, so one more meeting.
Well, thank you all very much, and like I said, we'll get this posted tomorrow. Thank you.
The total was one fifty-four.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Totally, the director's license.
Appreciate you driving up here, Tammy.
Sorry.
Current compensation right now was one fifty-four, so, so, and, but we have the survey data from, from TSBA on director salaries around the state, so we're going to have to look at that, so.
All right, you can just get back to me.
We'll get that information as soon as we can.
All right, thank you very much.
Soon as we can get another meeting scheduled. Thank you very much, Dr. Grissom. We need a motion to dismiss.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
Mr. Hansert, Mr. Cordell.
Y'all be careful going home.
Oh, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.